Are we on? Hello. Welcome to the April 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting for the city of Malden. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Deerhog, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Locklear?
Present.
Commissioner Eskridge? Commissioner Green?
Present.
Commissioner Bixler?
Present.
And our chairman, Commissioner Paulson.
Present. Thank you. I'd like you all to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Yeah. A little bit of rearranging in here. At tonight's meeting, we'll be discussing and considering the following agenda items. It's a rezoning at 307 East Butler Road from Residential 12 to Commercial 1, and a review of the final development plan for the Tanner Road Land Development project. If you're here tonight for any item not listed on the agenda, we will not be able to discuss that during our meeting tonight. But you're welcome to come and talk to one of us after the meeting or contact the city staff during regular business hours. Tonight, we'll do our best to maintain professionalism and courtesy throughout the meeting, and we ask all of us here tonight for the same. Please refrain from talking, clapping, or similar disturbances. There'll be time provided for members of the public to speak during each business item on the agenda. Please deactivate or silence any personal electronic devices. So we're going to start with a review and approval of the minutes from the February Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion from Commissioner Eskridge to approve the minutes from the February meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have multiple seconds from multiple commissioners. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a vote. There aren't anyone online, is there? All right, I forgot to check. All right.
But we're not a thick.
I didn't know if there was anybody from the commission online.
No.
Go ahead and call for a vote now with regard to the minutes. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous. The next item on the agenda tonight is discussion regarding the rezoning of 307 East Butler Road. We're going to begin with an introduction from staff. After that, I'll ask any members of the commission if they need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication regarding this item. After this, the applicant will give an opportunity to comment if they need to. Following the applicant's comments, we're going to open the floor to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment will be granted three minutes to speak. And you'll only be allowed to speak once. You may not concede your time to other speakers. If someone has already expressed your thoughts on the matter, please just indicate that you agree with them. This will help us move the meeting along, and we'll all be respectful of each other while they're talking. After each person who wishes to speak has had their turn, we'll close the floor to public comment, and we'll provide the applicant an opportunity to provide any final comments. And then we'll receive the recommendation of staff. So to get things started, Mr. Deerhog, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city's received a petition requesting the rezoning of a tract at 307 East Butler Road. It includes approximately two acres, split between two properties at that location. The applicants, and the location is shown on the screen, kind of highlighted in the peachy-orange color, if you will. The applicants requested this tract be rezoned from R12 Residential to C1 Light Commercial. The applicant is planning to develop an indoor facility or gymnasium for badminton and pickleball. And applicants provided a few sample renderings of the concept that they are considering. Here's a sample site plan for that project. That's the introduction I have for this item. I'll turn that back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me ask the commission. Does anyone have a conflict of interest or ex parte communication to disclose regarding this item? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any public comment about this item. Oh, you're right. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip that. Is the applicant here tonight? Oh, yes, please come up. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Lisa Williams. I represent the applicant, which is Carolina Sports Club. Can I approach the bench and hand you some cards that have my information on it, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead and give them to staff, we'll get them, thank you.
Just wanted to let you know who I was. We have, so you guys may be wondering why Carolina Sports Club looked into Malden for this facility. I've been working, I'm in commercial real estate, one of the few female brokers here in Greenville, South Carolina, represent as well. Anyways, we have looked all over Greenville County, Spartanburg County, found the perfect destination for Carolina Sports Club, which will be an indoor badminton facility primarily. We think Malden is the perfect location for this facility because it's centrally located between Taylor, South Carolina, downtown Greenville, it's close to Simpsonville, and Malden represents what Carolina Sports Club wants to have for a community. And so also, of course, Malden's growth rate is looking like it's growing at 3.59% annually. So Malden's growing exponentially since our 2020 census. My job as a commercial real estate agent, a lot of times, is pretty calculated. We sell, we buy. But the development side of my job is really the most exciting part. It can also be the most difficult, but it's also the most exciting because it's where I see growth in communities. And I'm able to go to communities like this and propose new facilities to be built that would help a community. And so in looking at Malden, we decided that this would, like I said, would be a great place to put this facility. It's centrally located between 85, you can get here through coming down 276. You can also access it easily off 385 coming down Butler Road, either from Greenville or Columbia. And I'm actually a native of Greenville County, so I'm very familiar with all of the surrounding areas and how this community has grown in recent years. I'm a graduate of Riverside High School. And so I have seen Greenville grow exponentially since I have lived here. I'm probably one of the few natives that still is here in Greenville County that can actually say that I've actually seen the growth. So when I talk about development, I called it really dear to my heart. I think that when I propose something, I don't take it lightly. I understand that there's people that get their lives turned around by stuff that I propose, and I'm often sorry that that happens. But at the same time, I'm looking for future generations and how this impacts the future of the generations ahead of us. I was once a little girl in this community, and there's facilities like the YMCA here in Greenville that I would go to. And then as we have increased our population, there was the Pavilion, which is where the badminton, I think you probably already read the information, they're currently meeting. It's just not quite large enough, they only get a couple nights a week. And so therefore, this group of people that I'm working with, they just really want to establish a badminton facility just for that purpose only. And so it's a really quiet activity. It draws, it would be an opportunity for people to reserve courts, it's pretty low maintenance. And there's different fees involved and how they can generate revenues. If you were able to take an opportunity to look at the facility in Raleigh, which is kind of how they are mimicking their facility here, and that would be in Malden. They do have the opportunity to get the youth involved, and hopefully potentially their goal would be to let this integrate into the school system here in Greenville County, which I think is huge, which is, it does impact that future generation. And I think Malden is the perfect place to do it, just like I said, because of where it's located, essentially located, and it's easily accessible from 85 and 385. Additionally, I do, I just think that moving forward, we would love to work with Malden, and we think that this would be a great opportunity for your community. We, just like the facility in Raleigh, I feel like that this would be an opportunity for the few tournaments that are held here to bring people from outside of Greenville County, maybe Spartanburg County, into this area. And I feel like it'd be an opportunity to advertise your community and your town to others that may not have ever heard of Malden. And so they could come to your new restaurants, your new facilities that you're building. They could, you know, be a part of that, and they could see how special this town is and exactly what it means to your community. With that said, I don't think I have anything else. Hopefully, you've read all the information, I don't want to kind of reiterate stuff that you may have already read. But I just wanted to let you know who I was and who I present in Carolina Sports Club. And this is, this is an activity that they hope to share with the community here in Malden and those that are around here. Thank you for taking your time to listen to me today.
Thank you, we may have questions for you later. All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comments regarding this item.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to keep a timer?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Deerhog will be keeping a three-minute timer. If you would like to share a comment, please approach the microphone and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Brenda Thompson?
Sir.
Thank you.
Been for the last 15 years. When I found out about this proposed facility, I was rather concerned because I bought in Malden because it was a residential community. People here are more like family than they are interested in outsiders and outsider money. That's what this is all about is money. It was made very clear at the informational meeting that they don't want people from where I live, which is Summer Woods Condominium Complex. This place will be 20 foot outside my back door. And do you think I really and truly wanted to live that way when I bought that in order to keep my children from having to look after a piece of land for me? I bought in a condominium complex on purpose, but I bought in one that was in a residential community. All of us that live in there pay taxes, there are others that feel just like I do, that are just as concerned about bringing in, as we were told at their meeting, people that don't live in Malden. People who don't make their living in Malden. People who don't pay taxes in Malden. Their excuse was, oh, they're going to have to pay $100. Well, if it's that exclusive, we don't need them in Malden. If they're not concerned about Malden itself, then they're not concerned about those that live around them or about anything that happens to any of us. We're not a big town, we're not Greenville. And I know the plan is for Butler Road to be commercial all the way from Woodruff Road to where it becomes Malden Road. I hope that's after I'm dead and gone. Because I like the community I live in, I like to walk out at night with my two pups and get a little bit of exercise when I'm not confined to this cane that I'm confined to right now. I like the summer air. I don't like a lot of noise. And this is going to impact my daily life. Because hopefully, the South Carolina government will see fit to allow me to retire by the time I'm 80. And I hope I've got years to live thereafter, but I don't want to listen to loud music in somebody's car that they haven't muted. I get enough of that right now as it is from Butler Road. I don't need it in a parking lot because somebody wants to listen. I also don't need the runoff, asphalt does not absorb water, as I've I hear your timer. And I'll call it at this, it's not desirable for us to live with a pickleball place when we've already got two being built in the Malden area, as well as the senior center, which provides pickleball.
Thank you. Dennis Rains?
First off, you got to quit moving the flag. You're just confusing me, I don't know what happened to that tonight. Dennis Rains, 305 East Butler Road. And I only have a couple of questions because I've had three, I probably couldn't remember them all. So the first question I have is that, when we were at the public meeting, this was touted as a badminton period. And we even questioned why not pickleball. Okay, because we didn't understand why, how so many people could be just playing badminton, okay? And so I think again tonight, Lisa has said this is going to be badminton only, but yet the plans, the engineering plans, there's going to be racquetball and pickleball. So we're confused, I'm confused, so I need to know, is it going to be racquetball, I mean, badminton or pickleball? We'll have a time afterwards. We'll wait for that response, okay?
Written it down.
Gotcha. And then, and then, and then the second, the second concern that we have is that obviously this is next door to us, and I think the three, three things that they're allowed, for the fencing is a hedge, and then some type of solid fencing, be it brick or wood or whatever. Obviously, most of us know kids can get through a hedge, okay? So people can get through hedges. So we, what we'd like to hear is what the real commitment is going to be in terms of what that wall will look like. Is it going to be a solid wall from day one, once they open? Are they going to plant hedges and it takes six years for those to grow? In the meantime, people are coming through those hedges. Because again, this is right next door to us. I mean, you know, it's, the lot line is nothing at the parking lot. We know the 20-foot setback is at the building. And then I guess, I guess my third comment is that I'm okay with the C1. I think that's probably the best zoning classification that I will be go there at this point. It's very restrictive. We also asked, would there be beer and wine sold at that location? And the answer to that was no. But I think that the C1, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the C1 basically does not permit beer and wine sales at that location. I read it correctly, how about that? And that's all I have, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tom Newton?
Hello. I'm president of the HOA at Summer Woods, and I speak for everyone I've talked to at the condominiums, there's 54 units there. From what we were told at the introductory meeting, this is going to be very close to all the units down the side at their back patios are going to be, like Brenda said, we can understand like 20 feet away from the warehouse or parking lot they're putting there. I don't think we'd be opposed to a business being there, you got Joy Real Estate there. And if it was a business that went back as far as Joy Real Estate, it wouldn't be a problem. This one's going to go back very close to the, you know, creek, Gilder Creek that's back there, I believe. I think y'all have already changed something about the retention pond or something like that, you're going to have to do a retention pond, or I think they were planning on putting a pipe or something under it to go down to the creek. But I think they, hopefully, if they do, are approved, they'd have to do a retention pond. But our problem is just, you know, we've had those woods there ever since the condominiums were built. People have their back patios all along those woods, and this is just going to destroy that natural area there. If it is put there, we just request that there be a tall fence or wall put there between the building and our, you know, living area. I mean, how would you like to have a building put in your backyard? Basically, all I wanted to say.
I missed your name and your address.
Tom Newton, and I'm at 505 Summer Woods Drive.
Is there anyone else here tonight that'd like to comment on this item? Who wasn't on the list? Hearing no more comments? I'd like to close the floor at this time. Does the applicant wish to provide any final comments?
I just wanted to answer your questions. These guys actually have moved their primary business to 503 South Main Street in Malden, so they are invested in Malden already. They see this as a place where they can not only have badminton, but also have their normal work, their normal job that they do from eight to five every day. So they have actually already moved into Malden to do that, so they could be close to this area, just so you know. As far as the question about badminton or pickleball, what's it going to be? I appreciate you bringing that back up. It is going to be badminton, but badminton and pickleball have the same size courts. So if somebody wanted to, if there came a need for that, I guess, for just pickleball, they could reserve it for pickleball, but it is primarily going to be badminton. As I said, there's 176 people that are currently playing at the Pavilion off of, in Taylor's, and they only get that two nights a week for three hours, so they primarily see this as being a badminton facility. But like I said, the courts are the same size, so if they needed somebody, if it became a huge interest, I know there's already pickleball facility being built right down the street, I don't know if that's even going to be a need, but it could be done because it's the same size, you just move the nets around. As far as what it's going to look like on the exterior is the hedges or fence, that's really going to be up to Malden and what they tell us that we need to do. We're willing to meet the needs of you guys, we don't want to upset anybody any more than you guys are already upset. So it's whatever Malden Commission wants us to do, we could do both hedges and we could do fencing. I think personally, I think the trees need to be there because I think it would take it, they're going to leave as many trees as possible. But with that said, I think trees look great, but I understand your concern about a fence as well. And these are just preliminaries, by the way. We have gone back and forth about the detention, non-detention, as far as doing underwater, we spent a lot of, my clients have spent a lot of money in redesigning this, and we kind of put their redesign on hold just because we don't want to spend any more money until we understand that this is an approved zoning process that has been passed through. So we've kind of gone back and forth, and I was like, hey, guys, let's just kind of put this on hold until we know that we aren't throwing good money to bad. So, and there's also needs to be some rework on the entrance because of the road work, so that's kind of all up in the air. And with that said, we, they could go either way with the detention or the underground detention. There is going to be no food or drink sold in this facility, no food at all, so that's not an issue. I think someone, nobody addressed this tonight, but it was a concern at the neighborhood meeting as to what this facility would be used for if the pickleball, excuse me, if the badminton facility did not work out, and it would just be turned over to office space, they would convert it. It would just simply be office space if that was the case. If for some reason badminton didn't work out here. That was all the questions that I wrote down that you guys asked. Did you guys have, did I leave anything out, guys? At all? Okay, all right.
Just a moment. Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant?
I had a few related.
Sure.
First of all, regarding setbacks. So on the site plan, you have a setback of 30 feet to the left and then 20 feet to the right, which is closest to the condo development. Is there a reason you could not adjust that?
I have one that has the 30-foot, it's just the parking lot, we can't get it configured correctly with the above-ground detention. And that's when I said, hey, guys, let's just hold off and trying to continuously try to adjust this because unless, if this doesn't get rezoned, there's no point in us spending $1,000 every time we get them to revise it. But we do have one that shows, I can give it to you before we leave. That shows the 30-foot setback on.
I was just curious because there's been some discussion related to setbacks, I mean, close property lines, preserving vegetation as possible. Just to help maybe give a little bit back to the existing neighbors there. Consider that as a possibility. And also, you're mentioning above-ground or underground. That's, that makes a big difference, in my opinion, which route you go with that.
Sure.
Because with, with underground, that could be under the parking lot.
Right.
You could preserve trees and beautification behind the building itself, which I think would also help with some of the concerns we've heard. So I think that's an important element, we didn't know. Which, which is it? Is it, you know, it's not an either-or. In my opinion, that's a big component because having the retention pond in the back takes a lot of, a lot of area and will require removing trees. That's a big consideration.
I believe we're going to have to end up doing a underground detention just because we're not going to have enough parking. Otherwise, we're going to have to ship the building back. With that 90 feet taken on the front from the building of Better Butler Project, that shift everything backwards. Am I not right in saying that, guys? So I'm pretty, I mean, that's what's going to have to happen to make us have enough parking as is. We have to have 250 spaces per square foot. And with that, and we've shrunk the building, the last building size we came up with, I believe, was 12,000 square feet. So we made the building smaller, and we're going to have to do the underground detention. And then we're going to have to figure out, I think Joy Bailey's here, we're going to have to work with Joy, probably. I don't, I don't know if she understands the requirements about the entrances and exits, but they can only be so far apart, so she needs help. Hopefully, she's going to have enough parking if she keeps her entrance where it is and they kill that other side, otherwise, we may have to do a parking together because they have to be so many feet apart, DOTs. So that's up for discussion. But, you know, that's another way to help try to make it work for everybody as far as that goes, so.
Then the question came out, hedges versus fence.
Right.
Has there been a decision made? What you're proposing? Either or again, but a definite, this is what we plan to do.
I mean, if you tell us we have to have a fence, we'll have a fence. If you tell us we need hedges and fences, we'll do both. I don't, I think it's really up to your property owners next door, they've kind of told, said what they want, so we don't want to make anybody upset by not putting a fence there if that's what needs to be done. So I don't think you guys are objecting at all to a fence. I don't think that's an issue. Yeah. And I just simply said that I like trees, so I feel like it needs to be maybe some trees and a fence, in my opinion, because like you said, you want to keep the, keep the aesthetics the way it kind of looked before, so. Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you. Mr. Deerhog, will you please provide the recommendation of staff?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll, I'll start by just talking about the C1 district first. It's a light commercial district, it's intended to promote small-scale retail service and professional offices that provide good That provide goods and services, uh, generally located in areas adjacent to residential districts. And I provided in the report for you the types of businesses and uses that are allowed in the C one district. So you could see that. Uh, you can see that this falls into that category as a sports club. As far as the requirements in the C one district, there are different setback and buffer requirements. They have a front building setback, a minimum of twenty five feet that are required to meet, uh, with, that includes a ten foot streetscape buffer. There are buffers that are required on the, um, the R twelve side of this, where there's some single family homes, as well as a buffer required on the RM side, where there's the Summer Woods condos. Uh, on the R twelve side by the homes, they're required to provide a thirty foot wide landscape buffer. And this may kind of add, address your question a little bit more, Mr. Green, as to why there's the difference on the two sides. On the other side is a twenty foot wide buffer required next to the Summerwood condos. And I think that's, they're different because there are different types of uses on each side. One, single family, uh, detached residences, and the other is attached condos. But so that's what the zoning ordinance requires. There's a minimum number of parking spaces they'll be required to meet. Maximum building height in the C one district is forty five feet, which is just a little bit more than what's required in the R twelve. It's actually consistent with the RM. Uh, the primary facade materials that'll be required here are brick or brick veneer or natural or manufactured stone. And then there's some other additional materials that could be allowed on the backside of the building, either like fiber cement or split face block. And then there's some lighting standards, the maximum light level, they'll be permitted at the property line is a half a foot candle. Uh, let me shift gears and touch on the comprehensive plan real briefly. This property is designated as a neighborhood corridor in the future land use map of the, of the comprehensive plan. That designation is intended for limited application of commercial uses such as small scale offices, retail and so forth. And is, is, is consistent with the C one light commercial district. We've gone through and gone ahead and evaluated some different aspects of this proposal tonight. First, in terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, uh, this, the C one district is consistent with the neighborhood corridor. That's shown in the comprehensive plan. And in addition, we've seen in this area, particularly near the corner of Old Mill and East Butler Road, that, um, there've been some other properties that have been rezoned, albeit they've been to a rezoned to a more intense district, the C two. But we're seeing, uh, changes along this corridor going from residential to commor- to commercial. Uh, there is a flood plain that's located at the back of this property. But they will, uh, not plan on disturbing that flood plain. The potential uses allowed in the C one light commer- commercial district, I've touched on this. They're intended to entail commercial uses that would have relatively less impact on adjacent residences. As to compared to the types of uses allowed in the general commercial district. For this particular project, uh, the nature of this business is going to be indoor operations. So it would be expected to have a low impact. All the utilities, including water and sewer, appear to be available at this tract. There's a rewashed sewer line available at the rear of the property and a city of Malden sewer line at the front. Um, the proposed business is not expected to generate significant traffic. The closest comp to this is racket clubs, which are associated with approximately three point eight evening peak hour trips per court. They're, I know everything's conceptual with what they're showing us right now, but they've conceptionally shown about nine courts maybe at the facility. That would equate to about thirty four evening peak hour trips, which is well below the one hundred peak hour trips. That would trigger the requirement for a traffic impact study. And, uh, finally, as the population continues to grow in and around the city of Malden, there is an increased need for businesses that provide commercial products and services as well as recreational opportunities for the growing prop- population. It's staff's opinion that the C one zoning district is consistent with the future land use map provided in the compli- comprehensive plan. And that, uh, the impacts of the operations will be relatively minor. But we'll leave it to the planning commission as well as the city council to make a judgment on whether you believe this rezoning is consistent with the vision for the future of this area. And whether the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and any other factors that you may deem pertinent. And I would suggest it probably is entirely appropriate to, uh, if there is strong interest in having a fence built on both sides of this property next to the neighbors to, uh, go ahead and ask that, uh, applicant to be willing to provide that when it comes time for them to provide their site plan drawings. That concludes our report. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the commission have any questions for staff?
Mr. Deerhog, I just have one question, and maybe I should already know this. So in theory, if we, we vote to have this rezoned, and for some reason the project doesn't move forward. Does it can, um, can it be stipulated that it goes back to the current designation after a certain time period? Or will it be automatically rezoned to the C one?
It, that generally doesn't happen, but I believe there is a provision in our, in our ordinances somewhere that does say that the city council can revert the zoning back if the development hasn't started within a certain time period. I believe it's typically a year. So, um, that is something that the council could take up and consider reverting the zoning back if, if nothing's happened on this.
Thank you.
I'm not particularly against the concept. Understand the concept, and I think it is a good concept. My problem is whether this concept is appropriate for the location. And that being said, I would like to see it, this concept come to Malden. I think working with the city, there may be better locations available than this present one. And Evan, I'm with you on that. You know, if it is rezoned, this body has to look at what's going to happen two years down the road. If the business or i- if it changes, uh, what does that do? You, you've got the building there. This body's got to look at what, what comes in there later, two years, ten years, five years, whatever, down the road. And, uh, I'm not so sure that I'm in favor of the concept at this location.
Additional comments? Questions for staff? Okay. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Chairman, I would make the motion that on the docket PC, there's twenty twenty-three, there's O two, S R Z. Be denied.
I have a motion from Commissioner Eskridge to recommend the council that we deny this request to change the zoning from R twelve to C one. Did I state that correctly? Did I state your motion correctly? I did, didn't I? I did, okay. I just wanted to make sure I stated your motion correctly. Thank you. Do I have a, do I hear a second regarding this motion? Do I have any other motions?
There's no second, and that motion dies on the floor, and you're still open to another motion.
I think the issue here is we're a little conflicted. Cause there are certain parameters haven't clearly been defined. I think that's what I'm struggling with. That the idea of we may have underground detention or we may not. We may have a fence or we may not. I'll just make this statement. We're all residents of Malden. We're all looking at growth and we're trying to be strategic in that growth. And we're trying to be thoughtful in that process. With that, when something's presented to us, we like to have all the boxes checked. And we like to understand the direction of a new development. So for me personally, I would like to see more information, uh, especially some of the concerns addressed by the residents. That that is addressed and that is defined and not as something that might be addressed later. I would motion that we table this discussion until our next meeting. Till we have additional information.
Mr. Green, what I heard was if we require them to have a fence and trees, they'll do it. So I think I heard all of the questions answered, that they're not going to do definitive until we vote on whether we're going to change the zoning. I was thoroughly excited reading this information. And I was surprised a little bit at the opposition. Because we have voted for so many housing communities to come into Malden. And my concern is I would love to have more recreation here so that the people that are already here will have options rather than. And I agree with, uh, the first lady that spoke. It is about money, but everything is about money. And I feel like we have to be wise with how we're going to generate money. So now we've got an influx of, uh, residents moving into Malden, and it's already a bit congested. And I feel like we should have better restaurants, better recreation options. And I feel like with the people who are living in Malden and the people that are coming to move to Malden, that this facility would be an asset. But at this point, it's my understanding that we're just voting on zoning. And I just wanted to put that out.
Yes, I, uh, with, with regard to assurances, I have to agree with Commissioner Locklear. Tonight, we're just looking to make it C one. And if the project doesn't go forward, then the list that staff has provided of additional uses, any of those could go in. I know that the developer won't spend any more money until they have some assurance that we're actually going to allow it. I guess it's, I guess the, it's while all this information is very helpful, really, uh, it could, it could stop at this particular portion of the, of the information packet. If that, for whatever reason, their, their project doesn't go forward. So thank you for all the good comments.
So there was, uh, last, there was a motion on the floor to table it. Is there a second on that? If not, then that motion dies.
Was Mr. Green's a motion? Was yours a, a motion? As far as tabling it?
Table it. Until, uh, more information regarding the project could be provided.
I would second that motion.
Alright.
If, if that's still open.
Well, the motion is on the floor and it has had gotten a second. And, uh, just to be clear, the motion was to table this item until a future meeting. And, um, for certain. Could you please restate that so I don't, uh, misquote you?
So my motion was to table it to a future meeting until we get definitive answers regarding fencing. The, and then either the underground detention or if there's going to be a retention pond.
Can I have a second from Commissioner?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding these motions? I'd like to call for a vote regarding this motion.
Like a roll call vote?
Yes, that would be fine. Thank you.
Alright. We'll start on the right side here, so start with you, Mr. Bixler. Commissioner Bixler?
I would vote in favor.
That was an I vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Eskridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Locklear? And our chairman, Commissioner Paulson?
Nay.
That motion passes by a vote of four to one.
Very well. We will table this item for further discussion at a future meeting. So that concludes discussion regarding that agenda item. The next item on the agenda is a, um, review of the planned development community. It's the final development plan review for the, the project on Tanner Road. Will follow the same procedure as the previous item. Mr. Deerhog, will you please introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So this should look familiar to you. This planned development project was, uh, brought before you last year, uh, as it was being presented to be annexed into the city and annexed as a planned development. So, uh, last year, you, uh, as the planning commission recommended approval of this planned development, and it was indeed approved by city council. This is a, uh, planned development project at the intersection of Tanner Road and Verdant Road, which is the location is shown on the map in the presentation, right? Applicants proposing to develop a rental community in this, at this project consisting of apartments, townhomes and live work units for a total of four hundred and sixty-one residential units, team workspace units. This is very, the plans that, here's some renderings of the various types of architectural buildings they'll have in this project. This first one is, uh, some multifamily and live work units on the ground, ground floor. Uh, this rendering is of some of the attached units that are kind of modeled after townhomes. And, uh, here's some of their amenity area. Um, this is the conceptual plan that you all saw back, uh, last year. And the site plan for this very nearly, pretty much mirrors it. That's the introduction for this item. I will, um, allow the applicant to make any additional introduction if they wish.
Thank you. Before we go to that portion of the meeting, do any members of the planning commission have conflicts of interest or ex parte communication to disclose regarding this item? Hearing none? Is the applicant here tonight? Would you wish to add any comments at this time? No? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open the floor to public comment at this time. Is there anyone here who'd like to add a comment regarding this agenda item? I don't have any names on the list, but if anyone has anything. No? In that case, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant tonight?
Chairman, I, I just, and maybe this is a question that happened. Uh, in the proposal, uh, there's some, it says it's a separate element, that the department of transportation has certain things that it's doing. I don't know if, if there's a timetable for those improvements or changes.
You're referring to the, uh, in the section on the traffic study, after the three improvements are bulleted?
Correct.
A paragraph after that?
Correct.
I have not heard of a timetable on that. Uh, I'm gonna look towards the applicant over there. Have you received any timetable from DOTM stuff?
No, there's no, they have not.
Additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Deerhog, will you please provide the recommendation of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm not gonna detail on this one, all the different aspects that I wrote about in the, uh, staff report. I think we covered, oh, most of these last year when, when this was considered as a planned development. But I, so I will just say, we've reviewed this final development plan for compliance with the city's codes and ordinances and have found that it meets or exceeds all the minimum standards and is consistent with the statement of intent and the conceptual plan that have been approved. So our recommendation is to approve this final development plan with the condition that the full civil engineering and landscape plans will meet the standards and the codes and ordinances for the city of Malden.
Thank you. Do any members of the commission have additional questions for staff or comments? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion regarding this item? So a motion to approve without any conditions?
Based on the staff recommendation.
I have a motion from Commissioner Green to approve of the plans, uh, with the, bearing in mind the staff recommendations for a full civil engineering and landscape plans to meet the standards and codes and ordinances of the city of Malden. And I have a second from Commissioner Locklear. Is that correct? Thank you. Any last minute discussion? Like to go ahead and call for a vote in that case? All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It appears to be unanimous vote and for approval. That concludes the discussion on this item. Any other business?
There is no other business.
Very good. Alright then. Any motions to end the meeting? I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.